Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the special meeting for the Wheat Ridge City Council for March 4th, 2019. Would you please join me for the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
George Pond.
Present.
David Keeter.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Present.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We, in our order of the agenda, we have no proclamations and ceremonies. We have no minutes in your package for approval tonight, so we'll move to approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments or clarifications on the agenda? Then we will go with tonight's agenda. We will move to our citizens' right to speak. Anyone, any of our citizens are welcome to come and speak before council at every of our meetings on any item not on the agenda. Is there anyone here to speak?
I will speak now.
Okay. Please, please go to the podium and give us your first name and last name and spell your last name and your address and then you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Rachel Haltine and I live at 4690 Balsam Street. And I've got two things that I am excited to talk about tonight. The first is just a huge, huge kudos and thank you to the city for throwing a fabulous gala on Saturday night. It was absolutely like just exquisite. I felt like I was in a Cinderella movie. It's amazing how the Rex Center can transform. But it was a huge affirmation to the extraordinary people in our community and the city just did a great job. Everything about it just was 110% Wheat Ridge and it was really fun to see some people that I don't get to see so often. So, thank you and good work. That was really fantastic. I attended the gala after a four-and-a-half hour working session with the NRS Steering Committee and we were really excited to dive deep into the responses from 1,053 people in our community who took the time to complete the NRS community survey. So, we are moving forward with confidence that we've heard from a good representation of our community. And I recognize that a lot of you were instrumental in helping connect our community members with that survey, so I just wanted to thank you. Again, Zach Urban early on sent out a postcard and really got people alerted to the fact that this was going on and we wanted to hear from them. We are hosting four open houses for community members and we certainly hope to see you guys there. Those dates are March 19th and March 20th. And there's four different times, four different places. Our objective is to hopefully have a time that works for anyone that's interested in coming. Those times and locations are all posted on the city's website. So, if you just go to the city's website, it should be easy to find there or you can just do the city's website backslash, backslash NRS. And again, thank you. And if you can keep at it and let your contacts and your circle of people know that the open house is an opportunity to learn what we learned from the survey and to get next steps. And we are, we are closing in on the end game and are looking forward to a draft in April or May. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to speak under citizens' right to speak? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to our first order of business. Agenda item number one. Mr. Pond, would you please introduce agenda item?
Happily. Motion to appoint candidate to District 3 city council seat, term ending November 22nd, 2021. At issue, District 3 council member Tim Fitzgerald resigned from his city council seat effective February 10th, 2019, in order to fill the District 3 vacancy. Perspective candidates were invited to present to city council during the February 25th, 2019 study session. Section 4.5 of the Wheat Ridge City Charter requires that the remaining council members shall choose by majority vote a duly qualified person from the proper district to fill such vacancy within 30 days of resignation or by March 12th, 2019.
Thank you. We, we don't have a staff presentation because this doesn't fall under the purview of the staff but of the city council. I'd like to open this up to public comment for, for anyone, anyone here who would like to come and speak on agenda item number one. You may come forward. See if we have any speakers. So, we have a speaker coming forward.
I'm still Rachel. Haltine and I live at 4690 Balsam. And I just, I am really excited tonight that we have such a qualified and I think deeply representative person who stepped forward to apply for this position. I've actually known Amanda long before either of us lived in Wheat Ridge and she was the one who said, "Hey, you should think about Wheat Ridge." And when I moved here, we actually lived together for a short, short stretch and she was on the planning commission. And the planning commission packets would arrive at her house and I didn't even really know what a planning commission was at the time. And they would show up and she'd sit at the dining room table and she'd get ready to go. And, and I just remember how many times she would, on her way out the door, talk about how moved she was at the opportunity to represent the community and she like genuinely loved pledging allegiance. And, sorry. But I think that, that we're really fortunate as a community to have people like Amanda who are willing to, to serve in the capacity as passionate residents, deeply knowledgeable professionals. And Amanda to me represents just such an exquisite part of our community and that she's deeply committed to our heritage and our roots and, and what makes us uniquely us. And she also has just such a strength of vision for who we can be. And she has, she has opened up her 13 acres to be a place where our community comes together. And she's learned about farming through our community and she has turned around and shared that opportunity with neighbors. And I, I'm just really excited. I think somebody like that on council who really cares about where we came from and really cares about where we're going can, can weather whatever is ahead the next two and a half years. By no means will anyone ever fill Tim Fitzgerald's shoes. I'm deeply saddened that we've, we've lost his service. He's really impacted me in this community and some of the things that, that I'm most proud of and have really involved and really started with Tim. And, and I love that we could disagree and still really enjoy talking to each other. So, thank you Amanda for putting your application forward and thank you for your consideration. And I look forward to hopefully the next two and a half years. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, any other one here who would like to speak on this agenda item? All right, I will close the public comment. Mr. Pond, I believe a motion would be in order.
Thank you. If you allow me, I'm gonna spend just a couple of minutes before I make the motion and first reiterate how proud I am that we have such a great candidate stepping forward in Amanda for District 3. I agree with the comments that just were made. I couldn't have been more proud based on the presentation, the previous service, and I'm thrilled that you will have a chance after I do make this motion to, to come up and, and sit with us and, and work with us. But I would be remiss and maybe a little bit dishonest if I didn't say that this was bittersweet. And so, I just want to say a couple of words regarding Tim and thank and celebrate him as our former colleague, my peer and partner in District 3. Tim loved this city. And I'm sure of that. I saw that love and that commitment in every issue and in all the things that, that came, came forward as, as we did, took up business up here. And that was inspiring in and of itself. But perhaps more inspiring was his love for the democratic process and frankly, a passion for being engaged as citizens. Helping people be engaged as citizens. He worked on that long before he sat up here and I know that he had a lot of effect on, on folks. I, I remember talking to him, asking him if he would consider running, running for, for council. I think some part of him was reluctant and maybe he thought he could relax and, and enjoy retirement. But the part of him that loved this city and the part of him that really believed in participatory democracy could not say no. And so, he joined us and, and, and joined us in this work. You know, I, I know that I've been wrapped up in my life and, and much more so than, than learning from his example and his wisdom. And maybe I thought that I could do that later and, and for that, I'm truly sorry because I feel like I've, I've missed that. So, I will do my best to honor his, his service. And I know that the appointment of Amanda Weaver is a great start to that. So, I move to appoint Amanda Weaver to District 3 city council seat, term to expire November 22nd, 2021.
Second.
Mr. Urban seconded the motion made by Mr. Pond. We will have discussion on the motion. Well, I would like to thank, thank Ms. Weaver for putting in her application and good luck on the vote. And I'd also like to, to send my, my thanks, sincere thanks to Tim Fitzgerald who was instrumental in helping me get oriented into, into public office and was always a thoughtful in his deliberations and a gentleman in his presentation. So, I want to appreciate his, his service to our community. All right, there, would the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay. Ms. Weaver, would you please join us? Let's see, we've got, we, the judge is here. Would you please join us at the, at the podium?
You've got both of these. You've got both here. All set here, right?
Yeah.
Paperwork's good. Okay. Please, how are you? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Amanda Weaver.
I, Amanda Weaver.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The State of Colorado.
The State of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
District 3.
District 3.
For which I am about to assume.
For which I am about to assume.
Congratulations. All right, sign both. You keep one. And I'll give you one and you're, you're gonna be official. Be ready to, I think they want you to go up there, so. You bet.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome. Join us.
That's the one you want.
The die is for you.
Okay.
We will move on to city manager's matters. Mr. Goff, anything tonight?
Anything.
Okay, I'm looking for our city attorney. Is he here and does he have anything to say?
He does not.
Okay. Then we will go to elected officials' matters and if you have something, please signal me and we will go from there. Then I see none. Then we will adjourn this study session and we will, or this meeting, special meeting, and we will start our study session at 7 o'clock. Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the study session for the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for March 4th, 2019. Thank you all for joining us today. In our first order of business, we will open it up to citizen comment on any agenda item. And so I would -- is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak tonight on any agenda item? All right, seeing none, we will close the public comments section and move to, pardon me, agenda item number one, which has our 2019 Legislative Forum. And I would like to welcome our guests. I won't do any introductions except to perhaps introduce Council members Zachary Urban, who is our representative on CML, and ask Mr. Urban if he would go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to kind of give a quick overview, the Colorado Municipal League was actually had their first offices here in Wheat Ridge at 400 Wasworth where my personal office is. So it's kind of, you know, something special to have Colorado Municipal League come back here and to their roots, really. But the whole premise and the whole purpose behind CML is that we as cities around the state deserve that our ability to deserve to have our voice heard in a unique way at the State House. And CML provides us with that unique voice and that we're not -- CML isn't necessarily there to hash out every aspect of every bill, but more so look at how those bills impact cities and how cities can be benefited and as well as be hurt by any particular piece of legislation. And so we're very thankful for CML's ability to navigate those waters and help legislators understand the costs and the benefits of any particular legislation relating to cities. Because as a home rule city, we do hold a unique stature within the state government. And so having CML be there is really critical. And I just, I wanted to go through a couple of quick bills that we've discussed on the dais and that also are currently being debated at the State House. And then I'm going to hand it over to Kevin to fill in where I may have missed something. But at our previous council meeting, we discussed the Public Safety Recovery from Substance Abuse Bill. And the relation to the city of Wheat Ridge in this bill is that it allows the or requires the state of Colorado to license sober home facilities, which is a good thing in my mind, that it requires that licensure and that level of scrutiny for sober living homes. So that's something that is going to be coming up this week in front of the State House as far as being considered in committee. So we as a council made a consensus to support that and we'll be working on ways to show our support at the State House. In addition to that, the Senate Bill 19008, which deals with the criminal justice system and the impact of substance abuse and understanding how our criminal justice system treats and handles individuals with substance abuse while also dealing with any crimes that may have occurred and balancing those two needs out. So that's another bill that's coming up here this week as well. So we're following that closely. In addition to that, there's two other bills that directly affect the city of Wheat Ridge. One deals with the decoupling of electrical inspection fees from the state, which in many ways, the state will set what the fees can be and a city can go within 15% of what that is. And so this bill, this bill deals with decoupling that requirement from the state and will have some impact on us as a city as it relates to what we can charge for inspections regarding electrical work being done and making sure that we can actually recoup the actual costs of those inspections versus just collecting whatever fee is deemed necessary or warranted by the state. So that impacts us financially. And then in addition to that, along the same lines, the bill relating to plumbing inspections, which is the House Bill 191086, which is dealing with the previously dealt with the requirement that all inspections be done by a journeyman plumber. That bill has now been revised to deal more with the processes and procedures around contemporaneous review of plumbing inspections. And so it's not as onerous as it once was, but it still hasn't been heard in committee and it will be heard in committee this week. And then the other main bill, or there's quite a few bills, but the other one is regarding urban renewal. And the urban renewal bill, which is House Bill 191084, deals with the timing requirement to notify or notice property owners regarding any determination of blight or non-blight regarding their property within an urban renewal district, whereas previously it required a 30-day timeframe to be notified. This bill shortens that timeframe to five days. So it gives property owners a lot quicker notification regarding any determination one way or the other regarding blight. So that's just a quick overview of some of the things that are coming up this week within the State House that impacts us as a city. And we, again, rely heavily on CML to keep us informed about what's going on at the State House, what we need to be concerned about, what doesn't impact cities but still is meaningful to constituents. But as it relates to CML, it's really about how do different pieces of legislation benefit and cost us as a city. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Kevin Bommer, who I'll say is the Executive Director of CML.
Not yet. In waiting.
On March 29th, he'll be the Executive Director of--
No, 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 no. No, no. That's Sam's last day, which ensures that my first day is April Fool's Day. Sam's last laugh. That's true.
As of April 1st, the Executive Director of CML. Kevin, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, just a few more days left. And before I forget, speaking of Sam, I hope you have all seen the announcement or the open house at CML, March 21st, 4:00 to 7:00 PM, if you have a chance to stop by. That's what Sam wanted. And those of you know my boss, know that he's very clear on what he wants, very clear on what he didn't want, and everything in between is fair game. And I got some stuff planned. So in any event, thank you. And it's a great pleasure to be here. And congratulations to new council member. Two of the other things we do outside of advocacy, information and training, and we have resources for newly elected or appointed officials, so we can help. And so let us know anything we can do. So yeah, three legs of our stool, advocacy, information and training. You've asked me to talk about the legislative component. I think it is, you know, one of the more critical things that we do. We're a statewide organization of 270 municipalities around the state. There are two that are not members. And if any of you have any connections in Bonanza City or Sheridan Lake, you know, let me know because we'd love to go to 272. And if you know where Sheridan Lake or Bonanza City are, you get bonus points. Just a little overview before I tackle individual bills and stuff like that. You mentioned Wheat Ridge is a home rule municipality. You are one of 101 home rule municipalities. And although math was not my strong point, that leaves 171 left. And one of them is a territorial charter. That's Georgetown. I imagine still operating under a charter that you had when Colorado was a territory. And having to go to the General Assembly if you want to do amend your charter. They have to do that. The other 170 are statutory municipalities. But as a home rule municipality and the 100 other home rule municipalities, you represent 93.4% of the population of the state of Colorado, which is pretty significant. Those of you who are elected officials, you join about 1,815 other municipal elected officials around the state. And you and the staff are all voices that we try to represent all of the municipal interests at the State House. Now, as a statewide organization, we're a family. And sometimes you have a sibling here or there that doesn't always get along or doesn't agree with, and we have that come up. The positions that we take are done through a policy process, through our policy committee, makes recommendations to our 21-member board, which is elected by our membership at the annual conference. And those positions are what you have reflected in the material here when the CML has a position on the bill. Most of the, most of the initial vetting of either anticipated or introduced legislation comes through the staff because we see it. We know, we know what's going on. We know what's going to be coming. But while we may make a staff recommendation to the policy committee, their discussion is theirs and theirs alone. And actually, and unique to some of our colleagues in other states, we actually invite our members before we get started early in the year, if there is legislation that any of our members want to propose that CML initiate, then we have a process for that. It's pretty rare. And as you might expect, as a municipal family, we don't often go to the State House asking the General Assembly to do anything. Usually, it's the other way around. Please stop doing that. Leave us alone. And, but that being said, we end up, and it's been kind of a trend in the last few years, supporting more bills than we oppose. And I haven't done the current tally on our box score, but that is, but that is still the same. We're supporting more bills than we oppose. And you've got a snapshot as of a few days ago from our CML State House report that's inside your packet. That gets updated every week. If you do not get the CML State House report delivered to you electronically, it's an email. There's an entertaining video on there. If you like watching talking heads talk about legislation, myself and my colleagues, who I am remiss to mention if I don't mention them, Brandy Delang, Morgan Cullen, and Megan Dollar, three legislative and policy advocates, were your team in the State House. But also, there's a link in that email to this, which describes, and we update it weekly, our CML State House report, which is a little bit deeper dive into bills that and why we have positions, what they actually do. You mentioned a couple. And let me just add on to what was said about the Senate Bill 8, House Bill 1009. Those are both bills that Megan Dollar has been working on, support bills, and those are moving through the process. We don't expect really any opposition or trouble with those. We know that substance abuse and the sober living home issue, but particularly the substance abuse opioids, huge issue. It's a national epidemic. It is an epidemic. National League of Cities has recognized this, has key processes and plans in place, programs at the state level. It's obviously a point of emphasis for us as well and the General Assembly. These are good bills that, you know, we hope will make a dent. The sober living homes is a little different issue and complicated areas of law. But House Bill 1009, we think is going in the right direction. On House Bill 1035, Representative Duran, and House Bill 1086, we think those are going in the right direction as well. And some work still to be done in committee, I think yet this week on 1086, right, Representative Duran. And you've just been a pleasure to work with and we appreciate that. And Brandy Delang from CML has been working with Representative Duran on that legislation as well as House Bill 1035. House Bill 1035 is, there's a, that one's still not quite yet resolved yet in the decoupling of fees because it seems like every week brings a different issue with that. And I'm not saying this is what will happen. I'm telling, I'm just going to point this out as a possible route that this issue may take. There is a sunset bill that will be introduced on the state's electrical inspection fees that if the decoupling is not taken care of in a manner that everyone is satisfied with in House Bill 1035, it will automatically be addressed. with in House Bill ten thirty-five, it, it will automatically be addressed in the sunset bill, but we'll have to, we'll have to have the same conversation. I'm hopeful we get to yes on this, because it's, it's a lot of, there's been a lot of meetings and discussion. It'd be a shame to have to start all over. House Bill ten eighty-four, this is an example of a staff recommended, CML initiated bill of, CML initiated legislation. I say staff initiated, we, we, or staff recommended, we had a special committee on urban renewal that's been meeting, fortunately, a lot less frequently lately. Unfortunately, had to be formed when things were a little dicier in the urban renewal legislation world. But we still have that group meet. We brought to them an issue coming out of a Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals decision that essentially made law as to how blight notifications must occur. But it made it in, in district, federal district court, federal Court of Appeals, rather. And so we thought, you know, that in the future, it will be difficult for urban renewal authorities, directors, and elected officials, and the public to know what the state of Colorado law, if it's being made at the federal level. So essentially, what House Bill ten eighty-four does is, is put the Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals decision into Colorado law. It's good for property owners. It's probably clarified something that needed some clarification anyway. If there's going to be a blight consideration, they'll get the opportunity to know about it and raise an objection before the clock runs out. And that's House Bill ten eighty-four. There are a whole lot of other issues that are percolating in the General Assembly. Today was day sixty, which for some folks may, they may think it's the halfway point. Not even close. This is my nineteenth legislative session. I learned maybe after five or six, there are two halves to the legislative session, and it ain't sixty. The first half is about day one hundred, and the second half is the twenty days that follow. Because, and you're starting to see it, there are major league pieces of legislation that are becoming, that become introduced. You have the budget come in here later this month. And March and April are going to be hair-on-fire months, no doubt about it. And that means that there's got to be a lot of attention paid to discussions that are going on, to legislations being introduced. Things move faster. So that means we have to be more nimble in responding and reacting to amendments that are being proposed and deals that are being proposed. And that's why, that's why we're there for you, is to be able to be the, like, like you said, the eyes and ears in the State House and have a, have a good sense of what you need. Couple of bills that will be coming in, and one that's already in that will be acted upon this week. House Bill twelve-ten is a local government minimum wage bill. This bill has been proposed in various forms before. And, this is sponsored by Representatives Rochelle Galindo, former city council member in Greeley, Jervon Melton, and from Aurora. And then over on the Senate side, Senator Don McMoreno, who's carried this bill or a version of it before, he's the Chair of the Joint Budget Committee and a former city council member in Commerce City. And Senator Danielson is the, is the other Senate sponsor. The League is supporting local controlled minimum wage. And I wanted to talk about why that is, because that has been something that is somewhat controversial as a matter of, should this be a matter of statewide concern? Well, it is a matter of statewide concern. Well, why would the League be supporting something that has traditionally been a matter of statewide concern? I'm not going to lie to you, this is, this is a tricky discussion within the family, because are we for local control? Well, yes, absolutely. Are we for absolute local control? Well, that's where things get a little trickier. I told the mayor, local control also, I think, for all of you and, and the discussions we have, also means having a discussion about when you cede local control. When you have it, and you say, you cede it. In this case, this legislation is going the other way around. The state is offering through this legislation to cede control of local minimum wages to municipalities and counties. When we saw the bill in a draft form early on, I was very concerned, because, one, it needed a lot of work, and, two, it was likely to pass in the way that it was drafted. Because I was concerned that not everyone would read it with the same scrutiny about what it means at the local level, both for municipalities and counties, but also for businesses. And so we made a decision that if the bill was written in a way, this is the policy committee and the board supported this, if the bill was written in such a way as to grant the authority to local governments to decide to make an affirmative choice or decide to do nothing, we would support the legislation. That got us in, in the front door. And then we started, we've been working with proponents ever since, on how to make this legislation, if it passes, and I believe that it will, again, in whatever form it's introduced, more palatable, more workable, and address some of the concerns that the business community has legitimately raised. For example, you are standing on a street corner in Wheat Ridge, you cross the street into Lakewood, and you're, all of a sudden, you're in a jurisdiction that might have a different minimum wage. That could still happen, even with the amendments that we're talking about. That could still happen. However, the other problematic part of the bill, before it was ever introduced, and it's not introduced like this, is that a county, if it established a minimum wage, would have been, under that language, been able to set the minimum wage for the county and every municipality in the county, even if the municipality wanted to do something different, had done something different, because the original language would have said that the higher of the two controls. Problematic. So the only way we were able to effectuate change before the bill was introduced, make sure that wasn't in there, was to be on the train and not on the platform. The bill will have some work done in committee that will further affirm local authority, not just to have a local minimum wage that's either the same as the state's minimum wage, or something higher, but also to enter into intergovernmental agreements with other municipalities to help deal with the regional disparity and have a singular wage across jurisdictions, if those, if those jurisdictions so choose. So that's how the bill, I think, will move forward when it's heard in committee this week and, and we're supporting that legislation. I want to, because Senator Danielson is here, I want to commend her and, and her work with proponents and opponents alike on equal pay for equal work. Senator Danielson has bent over backwards to deal with some of the issues that were raised from the business community. And I was just commending you for your work on Senate Bill eighty-five. And, and, and that is not easy stuff. There are a whole lot of people that wanted to, to offer their two cents about how to make the bill better. But I think with the amendments that have been made, I think everyone is pretty close to either withdrawing opposition or, or, you know, maybe not getting everything that they want. But, you know, tough noogies, not everyone gets everything that they want. And, and I, and we appreciate that. And then, but one bill that is coming in that, also in the employment realm, and I want to make sure that folks are aware of this, because this one's not a kumbaya moment just yet. Senators Faith Winter and Angela Williams, Senator Winter has just been dogged in her pursuit of a family medical leave insurance bill. And Representative Gray on the House side has been her sponsor as well for a few years. And this, too, is legislation that I believe will pass this year. However, from a municipal employer standpoint, we think that there is a lot of work that needs to be done. And Senators Winter and Williams have been very open in working and hearing from the concerns being raised. I don't know where that bill's going yet. It's going to be introduced, I believe, on Thursday. And I think it'll be heard in its first committee next week. And I believe that, you know, barring a whole bunch of changes that are made to the last draft we were all working on, that the League and, well, I can't speak for others, the League will probably start with a position of opposed unless amended, and be able to be very specific about the items that we are opposed to. One that I've already raised with the sponsors of concern is previous versions of this bill. I should say what it does. It's a, I think everyone's familiar with the Family Medical Leave Act. This is a state version of the Family Medical Leave Act that includes a wage replacement, up to a thousand dollars a week. There's some limitations on that, for up to twelve weeks, with some variations on that, for family medical leave. That would be funded through a payroll deduction from employees' paychecks, funded fifty percent by employers, fifty percent by employees, and create an enterprise at the Division of Labor that would run the, run the program. A lot of details, too numerous to go into, but that's, that's the general point. If someone's going on maternity leave, has a, has an injury or an illness, or a loved one with an injury or illness, they're able to take that leave, be up to twelve weeks, and, and be able to have wage replacement. The difference between this bill this year and the prior four versions is that payroll deduction would now have the employer contribution. That's a concern and an issue that we'll be discussing as the bill goes through the process, because for public entities, municipalities and counties in particular, there's a state statute that prohibits, I put in quotes, because I'll talk about what the prohibition is, state unfunded mandates on local governments. And the prohibition, the remedy for the prohibition is not a great one. Municipalities can, and counties can, if the state doesn't fund the mandate, can choose to ignore the mandate. That becomes very difficult. Twenty-nine-one, three oh four point five. Bring it up whenever this comes up. There's also a part of Tabor, the Taxpayers' Bill Rights, that talks about state mandates. Now, I don't profess to be able to decipher or interpret everything that Douglas Bruce wrote into Tabor, but this one seems to be pretty clear, that there is an intent for the state not to pass along costs of programs to local districts using Tabor language. So we need to talk about that as well. And then I, we had some good representation from municipalities and counties, human resource folks who talked about, you know, some of the issues that created conflict between family and FMLA, that an employer could potentially be in a situation where they're either in violation of federal law or violation of state law. I think that the sponsors have been very willing to try to make sure that that's in harmony. There's concerns about stacking and, you know, a lot of other issues. But I think, I think the sponsors have been very responsive to want to hear what the concerns are, and we'll see where things go. But it happens. When a bill is introduced, it's not perfect. Oftentimes, and maybe it is perfect, I don't know. It's other people that mess it up.
I'm sorry.
Right. But, but, but with a process, a democratic process, you have, you know, multiple committees, you've got two chambers, you've got a governor who will oftentimes say, I like that, I don't like that. And so it's all about compromise. Not everyone, like I said, gets what they want. Usually, a bill, almost always, a bill looks different at the endpoint than it does at the start point. But I just wanted to raise that one, because that will be, I think, another newsmaker-type piece of legislation that will be introduced in the near, has not been introduced yet. It'll be a Senate, Senate bill. And I think on Thursday is the planned introduction date. And that, again, you know, it, there, there is not always a lot of transparency, and not always a lot of forthrightness, but it doesn't necessarily have to be. In this case, the sponsors have been very clear. Here's our bill draft. Tell us what you like, what you don't like, and we'll see what we can do. Here's when we're going to introduce it. Here's when we're going to hear in committee. And that's, that's not always the case, and it doesn't have to always be the case. But we sure appreciate in this and complicated legislation, there will be a lot more. There are other bills, a lot of public health and safety bills going through that we have either weighed in on or monitoring modifications to the Clean Indoor Air Act, changes to the ability for local governments to be able to license and regulate nicotine products without being penalized by the state for doing so. These are all positive steps in the right direction that we have either been supportive of or certainly helped mitigate with the, with the proponents and sponsors, any, any troubling language. And, you know, I guess, I'm, I'm always interested to hear if there are things or issues on your mind that you would want us, want me to talk about, because, you know, I can go on forever talking about things that I'm working on or my colleagues are working on. Any big, big-ticket issues that you're, you're tracking or interested in? And in the meantime, I'll pass out a couple pieces of propaganda.
Okay. Well, thank you. We'll give Mr. Ballmer a minute to catch his breath and pass this literature out. Do, does the councilors have bills that they'd like to speak about? Mr. Matthews?
I'd like to start out just with a general question. And as a citizen, and non-informed citizen sometimes, here's a question I have to answer. Who determines the definition of a fee versus a tax, and when to apply either of those?
I'm sorry, ask me that again. I was-
Who, who, who sets up the definition for a fee versus a tax, and sets the limits on when those can be used? For instance, if it's, as, as a normal human being, I would consider a fee to be something to cover a cost. But if it costs the state a dollar to provide something, are they allowed to charge ten dollars as a fee? And who determines between being a tax, which is, this is part of the Tabor discussion, versus fee? Because I guarantee you, since we passed Tabor, the amount of fees I see has, has increased exponentially.
Well, you've hit on the, the key aspect. Because it is a Tabor-related question and a Tabor-related answer, the ultimate authority on whether something is a fee or a tax is the Colorado Supreme Court, or Colorado Court of Appeals, if it doesn't go beyond that. So at its basic level, you are correct. A fee is a charge for a service provided that is intended to pay for that service. But when you start getting into, you know, other aspects, that, the example that, that you provide is crystal clear. But what exactly is involved in a liquor licensing fee, for example? Can you track every cost? And is it identical? At the state level, I'll pick on the state. So a state liquor license fee can be five hundred dollars one year and twelve hundred and fifty dollars the next year. Has the level of service or cost of providing that service significantly changed? Well, yes, because the, well, nothing else has changed. The number of permits coming in, or reapplications, et cetera, may go up or down. That is a cash-funded division. So the, the appropriation is at this level, and unless you start laying people off, then, or, or cutting out parts of the program, you've got to adjust the fee, licensing fee, to meet that appropriation. And in fact, in that case, the, the state has been underfunding the Liquor Enforcement Division for a long time. The fees aren't high enough, or they don't have enough people, or whatever. But the, the easiest answer is probably the least satisfactory one. The courts decide. And I think at the municipal level, I think our, I think we take a very conservative approach, so as not to get in hot water. I can't speak for, for the state, but I, I hear what you're saying. And that question comes up a lot on fees versus taxes. And a lot of folks that don't like a fee will, will say it's a tax. If it's something they support, well, no, that's, that's the cost of doing business. And then, it's sort of like, I've, I've decided that, since local control is such a big issue at the State House this year, it's come up in a lot of bills, there's a lot of support for it. And it dawned on me this year that when you support something that's empowering local government, it's local control. If you don't like it, it's a patchwork of local ordinances. So it's always in the eye of the beholder, I think. But ultimately, the courts.
I'll just look at your phone bill and some of your other bills, and there's one tax and fifty fees. And I just was curious, being, the reason I brought that up was there was one of the bills that was laid out in our paperwork, and they talked about creating a new fee for it. And that's what really prompted the question.
And we may see more of those before the, the session is over.
Is, is there a reason we cannot have our legislature try and define that, so that it's, you know, not on a, you know, and, and bring some order to that question? Because I know it's- Because I know it's been a question in the citizens' minds for years and years and years, and yet legislature doesn't seem inclined to bring some semblance of order to that question.
That may be part of the answer. I think the other, the other part of the, the other question that may be part of the answer is the cost of government, whatever it is, are we able to be, and this could be at any level of government, are we able to be completely transparent about how we address those costs? It is nearly impossible at the state level, for sure. It is possible at the local level, and we see a lot of success when we're able to say specifically for it, but it's often very difficult to get approval for new revenue through taxes. But it begs the question, is the expectation of what the government at any level is being asked to provide, meet what folks are willing and able to pay to provide it? And if they aren't, then are they willing to live what must be reduced or cut, or something else is funded and something isn't? And that's where I think fees have been able to come in if they are not a tax and they're paying for a service, if there's a cut in revenue that's needed, but that service is still required. I think that's where you're starting to see fees. Transportation, whether you love them or hate them, the faster fees are a great example of that. I don't think anyone likes paying the extra, but if you think the roads and the highways are in tough shape now, imagine if there had not been that revenue dispersed through the state and local government, HUTF, to help with all the projects that it paid for.
Thank you. Maybe we'll postpone our questions a little bit and welcome Senator Danielson.
I just wanted to say, I've got a few of these. Separate from legislation, we have our State of Cities and Towns report. And if you are interested, this is a compilation of the last 10 years of the State of Cities and Towns surveys that we've done, and a brainchild of Sam. So if you're interested in that, I'll make sure they get around, and Janelle's gone with you.
Thank you. And we'll be back to you, but I'd like to welcome Senator Danielson and Representative Duran back to the chambers. So thank you very much for joining us, give you the opportunity. Would you like to make some introductory remarks or say something for the council? Or we can pepper you with questions, or either or neither?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members and staff. It's great to be back. I'm not sure, you know, you've been here quite a while tonight, and I apologize, there's also an Arvada Town Council meeting tonight, and I had to attend at the request of some constituents on an issue that's pressing north of here that still lies in Senate District 20, so I apologize for my tardiness. So I'm Jessie Danielson. As you know, I used to be the state representative in Monica Seat, and now I represent Senate District 20 in the state senate. It's all in Jefferson County, and so in addition to Wheat Ridge, I represent Arvada, parts of Golden, into Lakewood, down through Littleton. I'm in some other communities along the way, but all of Wheat Ridge still, which is a point of pride for Senate District 20. In the past, what we've done is just touch on a couple of things. I mean, I think I'm carrying, you know, 20 titles. I don't think you need to hear about them all. I wanted to thank CML for a supporting position on my measure to allow local jurisdictions to raise the minimum wage if they see fit. So this is a measure that I ran last year, too, and has run for the last many years and has failed in the Republican-controlled senate. So we're more optimistic this go-around that it will pass. And Mr. Ballmer joined us at our introductory press conference, which was great to see. You know, we had folks, my co-prime sponsor in the house is from Greeley, and you know, I'm from northern Moud County, I represent Jeffco, I work in Denver. They're all really different parts of the state that need really different things for the folks that live there. If you see fit as a local jurisdiction to raise the minimum wage, if this bill passes, you'll be able to. So, but as you mentioned, I am disappointed to see on this rundown that CML has an opposed position unless further amended on Senate Bill 85, which is the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act. The reality is, for the constituents that you represent, that women are still earning pennies on the dollar for the same exact work as men. White women earn about 82% as much as men do for the same jobs, the same jobs. And a scale down for women of color at the bottom is Latino women who earn roughly 50 cents on the dollar to what a white man earns for the same exact work. I've heard that organizations that are considering opposing the measure don't believe that equal pay is still a problem, since we've had the federal equal pay provisions in place for 50 years. We've had them in place for 50 years, and nothing's changed. So finally, Colorado has the opportunity to take a very bold step forward with Senate Bill 85. I did compromise quite a lot with the, with some members of the business community that requested changes to make it more easily implemented, some valid concerns with how we had initially drafted the bill. But most of the remaining opposition to the measure are fundamentally opposed to the key provisions of the bill. So I'm very hopeful that CML will move to the neutral category, since we have significantly amended in adaptations to allow for this bill to be more easily implemented by the business community. As he said, there's just going to be a point when people need to decide. You're either in favor of making some changes so that women get paid what they should earn in the workplace and are no longer discriminated against in the workplace because they're women, or further discriminated against because they happen to not be white, or take the position that, no, there should be no regulatory changes. So there's three simple things in the bill. One says, you can't ask someone what they used to make. You can ask someone what their salary requirements are, the person can tell you what they used to make, but as a prospective employer, you can't ask someone what they used to make and rely on that information to pigeonhole them in that salary range, which is a huge reason that women are underpaid than men. Think of it this way, if you're already underpaid, you just can continue in that cycle if what they base your future salary on is what you used to be underpaid for. Pretty common sense. The second piece is, you have to post job opportunities, which again, in the public sphere, almost everyone does, and their salary range. So there's fierce opposition to that. If you can imagine fierce opposition from the quote-unquote "business community," the chamber included, that that, for some reason, is not doable. That's actually a huge way that people see job opportunities and further their own careers. They decide if they're qualified for the position. You don't have to hire anyone, but you've got to tell people when there's an opening. And the third piece is an accountability measure that we're introducing that allows an employee to hold her employers accountable if she can prove that she's been systematically discriminated against in the workplace by creating a private right of action. So for the first time, if you can prove that over the course of your career, you've been underpaid because you're a woman, or further underpaid because you're a woman of color, you can, for the first time, recoup those damages from your discriminatory employer. We did, like I said, make a lot of accommodations, the reasonable requests of responsible members of the business community, but there is a push to just gut the three tenets of the bill. That's not acceptable. This kind of discrimination is appalling, it's unacceptable, and we need to do something about it, and this is the tool. So it is my hope, you'll, I know you know this, we have the same constituents, equal pay, the demand for this bill is across party lines. Republican, Democrat, and Independent alike put this at the top of their list of things they sent us to the Capitol to take care of for them. So I'm hopeful that, again, CML will side with the constituents on this. And, you know, instead of some of, like you say here, working with associations representing employers, there's only a handful of staunch opponents of the bill that are never going to change their position. And it's going to be a stand-up-and-be-counted moment in the legislature, and I'm hopeful that we're going to do the right thing. So I am happy to take questions about that measure, if you like, or I can do my best to address other members' bills or priorities for CML or Wheat Ridge, but really, the local control of minimum wage is probably the only measure that I have that really has an impact. And now Wheat Ridge has not taken a position, but a lot of municipalities are thinking there, and we've got several dozen individual local elected officials who have signed on in support of that measure. So if there are other bills that you really want me to pay attention to, that's actually why I came tonight, to make sure you understood the gravity of the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act, and how important this is for women in the state. It is my top priority bill, it's the first one I introduced. And then the other measures, I'm, again, working on seniors' issues, so I just introduced a bill on Friday to fight elder abuse, working on climate issues, working on workers' rights issues. I'm doing the apprenticeship bill again, to promote apprenticeships, vocational, technical training opportunities for Coloradoans. There's a huge range of stuff I'm putting forward. So I guess what I'd say is, in our limited time tonight, I'm not going to rattle them off, but I appreciate your feedback. And believe me, when the session's over, I'll be able to come to more of your town council meetings, as I have in the past, with all the municipalities in my district. So we'll be able to engage more long-term after session's over. But in the meantime, if something that I'm putting forward as a prime sponsor has an impact on you and you need me to understand that, please, you know, you can have my cellphone, I've got my cards, email anytime, or if Chief Brennan, or, you know, on the law enforcement side, needs to weigh in, anytime. And otherwise, I can take any questions. I can take questions, or whether or not I can answer them, we'll see. But I really appreciate you putting this forum together and taking a few minutes to listen to me talk about a couple of my priorities.
Thank you very much, Senator Danielson. Questions for Senator Danielson? Well, I had one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And you were running again this year, the Apprenticeship and Vocational Training Bill, and I think that's a very, you know, my, I'm in the construction background, that's certainly a bill that, you know, our industry, but also parents and students in school are very, very interested in technical training and workforce development, and employee readiness has been a real, real key. And I want to thank you for running that bill again. I do want to, sort of, we had talked briefly last year about being more inclusive in the number of, in the number of programs that would be included on the list, and I wondered if you might be able to speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a great question. So last year, we did open that up, so there's 436, I believe, registered apprenticeships across the state. So what this measure does, for those who are newer, gee, maybe aren't completely keyed in on what I'm doing at the legislature, because you're doing your own work here, it's a simple measure to create the state's first apprenticeship directory. So while we have many guides for folks who are looking at post-secondary education, community colleges, the universities across the state, there's lots of resources to guide you through what you might get if you go through one of these programs, et cetera. We have a worker shortage. We need solid workers. We have skilled apprenticeships available with on-the-job training, job placement, and earn-as-you-learn, good-paying jobs at the end of these things, and they're going unfilled. So the idea is create the directory, which is one place where counselors, but also young people, adults who want to transition into a better-paying job or just a different job, could access information about what they get when they get one of these apprenticeships. So that's it. It's a very straightforward measure. Right now, as the bill reads, is the same as it was introduced last year, is that it is limited to apprenticeships that are registered through the Department of Labor, because there had to be a basic standard for which to hold the registry to. Now, last year, we were open to some ideas on how to expand that, but really, it seemed geared towards one particular program that was an internship and not actually an apprenticeship, which was very high-profile, and I'm sure you're probably familiar with it, if it's, you know, the Nolkensburg Program that was part of the process, the legislature, and gaining support for the measure, was that a number of opponents needed that to be part of it to move forward, although the apprenticeship directory is something different, where we're really just guiding folks to register apprenticeships. So that's where we landed again this year, Mayor Starker, and we'll see how, I just introduced it on Friday. So if there are ideas about expanding it, but still keeping it to some standard in apprenticeships, I'm very open. That's kind of the path it went last year, and I chose not to start with that, because in the end, it really didn't make that much sense to put it in the same bill, as that isn't actually an apprenticeship. It's more of an internship, which is a great opportunity, but not the same thing. So I think, I'm happy to take feedback on how we could expand it, but there does have to be kind of a basic bar of understanding of what is this, you know, the basic standard, and for that, we chose the registration with the Department of Labor.
Okay. Well, A, I appreciate you bringing the bill back, because I think it has great value to, you know, the citizens, students, and parents, and workers transitioning into new And secondly, I'll sort of defer, because I haven't read the piece of legislation, I wouldn't want to opine whether it was any changes that are necessary, but let me, I appreciate your willingness to sit down and talk about it, and we look forward to having a discussion.
Yep, it hasn't even had its first committee hearing yet, so, but it's been assigned education, appropriately so, because I want these apprenticeships to be thought of that way, a path forward for students, and like you mentioned, adults transitioning into better-paying jobs. So if we have a way to improve it together, we, let's chat.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Abbe.
I just have a question about the family medical leave insurance, and I know it has not yet been introduced, and we found out it's happening on Thursday. My concern is, not necessarily is like, as CML's looking at it for their municipalities, but for the small businesses that are in my district, and I'm just wondering if you have had an opportunity to reach out to small business owners, been able to crunch the numbers with them, to be able to see how this affects their bottom line, and if you understand that there's a difference between a five-person small business that's doing maybe $800,000 in sales one year, and a 20-person small business that's doing $5 million sales in one year, while they're both considered small businesses, there's a major difference between the two in what they can offer to their employees, and oftentimes, the smaller, what I call micro businesses, are when the business owner is in the business with their boots on the ground doing the work, rather than maybe in a more like CEO, executive position. And so I was just wondering if you've had an opportunity to speak with any of the small businesses that are in your district, to be able to gather some information on that before it hits the ground.
Representative, Senator Danielson, pardon me.
Thank you. It's just Jessie. We're not in the building. I'm no, it's a good question, and it's not uncommon, but yes, I have for years now. This has been a priority, again, priority legislation for the people that I currently represent, for the people that I used to represent, and the demand for this kind of family medical leave is real. And so there's been years-long discussions with small businesses, or your micro businesses as you categorize them, large businesses that are multi-state, even international entities, and alongside the constituents that this is supposed to benefit directly. We've heard about challenges with the proposed legislation, which is actually more progressive than last year. And we've heard from businesses who are also calling out for this, that this is part of their solution, that they intend to take advantage of in this climate where health insurance is so difficult for people to provide their employees. So yes, it's a good question, it's one I don't take lightly, but we've, and you know I'm not sponsoring, carrying the legislation, but I support it, in its four number of reasons. The outcry and demand from the public, this is something that they desperately need, but that there again, the business community is not solidified on this issue, that there is opposition, but there's strong support, too, from large, small, and every other-sized business across the state, and here in Jeffco. So I've heard from opponents, but I've heard strong support from the business community as well. So it's a broad range, and on this... So it's a broad range, and, and on this, I think the largest voice that I hear years on end is from the citizens who are begging us to take action on this issue.
Ms. Duran.
If I could chime in on this, I am a co-prime on this bill in the House. So we just had a town hall here on Saturday, and we had some guest speakers that came in and addressed a lot of questions. So really, it's going to go by your income, whether you have five employees or 10, say your salary is $20,000 a year. I think it roughly comes to about a little under $2 a week. So that is split between the employee and employer. So that's kind of the compromise we've come up with, with small business, so it's not a burden on small businesses, but yet, we're still getting the job done, because this is something extremely important, and as Senator Danielson mentioned, that it's been in the works for four years, and we just haven't been able to get to the right spot. So what this does is, it gives you 12 weeks that you can utilize, and you don't have to use it all at once, you can split it up, two weeks here, two weeks there, depending on if it's a birth of a baby, or a medical leave, or you're, you're caring for someone. But it also has safe leave in there, which is for anyone in a domestic violence situation that needs immediate, right, immediate week off to take care of some, some things. So it's a great bill, they're still working out a little bit more detail. Yes, it's going to come this week, and it's something that I'm proud to, to be behind and supporting.
Ms. Mathews.
Would this be like a regular FICA deduction where nobody has a choice to participate? They're forced to?
No.
Even if they don't want it?
They're not forced to. They're not forced to participate. If you choose to, you can, and the Division of Labor is going to take care of all of this.
I'm seeing a head shake up here.
From?
I think the payroll deduction is mandatory. The payroll deduction's mandatory, whether or not someone chooses to utilize the leave that's...
And I'm not even asking about the leave, I'm asking about the fee. If comes 50% from the employer, 50% from the employee, does every employee that gets hired have to pay the fee?
My understanding is, they didn't, but I will double-check that, if you're understanding something different than I am.
Because, because we asked Senator, I'm sorry, we, CML and CCI, and this, I think before you got here, I was saying how great the sponsors have been in the Senate about sitting, so far, because that's where it's starting, about sitting down and talking to everyone, and we had some HR folks, some men with them, and, and the reason I, the reason I'm pretty certain about this is because I asked about a public employer, a public sector exemption, if there were equivalent benefits provided, and, and was told, no, that that, that would not work, that it needed to be all-in.
Okay, I will double-check that.
And then I'm concerned a little bit about double jeopardy, a little bit for the employer, because he's got, if, if he's got an essential employee that's now unable to be gone for 12 weeks, what does he do to fill that spot? And what are his costs involved with that?
I know how Senator Winter answered that question when it was asked by someone else, and she answered it with something like this. That employee is going to have the baby, that employee is, got a sick relative, so it becomes a question of whether or not a new mother is forced to come back after two weeks, because she can't afford to be gone any longer, or if there will be replacement. And so the question that was asked was returned with a question, you know, are you going to support your employee? That is how Senator Winter answered that question when it was asked of her, and I think that would be, if she was sitting here, how she would answer that, but...
All I know is, I've had people not come back to work, because it was better for them to stay on the dole, getting workmen's, or, we used to call it rocking chair money, unemployment. They would refuse to come back to work, because since they had an income stream from unemployment, they worked it to the max.
This isn't unemployment, though. And I mean, when you think about having good employees working, and a life crisis comes up, right? And you've, I mean, you've been a loyal employee, you've been there, a life crisis comes up, you've put into this fund, whether it's $2 a week, up to $5 max, you're not taking anything away from the employer. I mean, yes, they're making that investment, but so are you. So, I mean, it's important to have. This is important. A lot of people lose their jobs because there is a, a family emergency, they're, whether they're taking care of their parents, or whether they've been diagnosed with cancer, whatever it might be. I mean, it's important that we, we address this, and we take care of good employees out there, and they, you know, the great thing about this is, they can take this from job to job. You know, say that they, for some reason, find a better job, or whatever they might be doing, they can take this with them. It isn't locked into that particular position.
Senator Duran, I mean, Senator Danielson.
Just, I'm telling you, it's just easier to call me Jesse.
No, no, don't, there's nothing, don't read anything into it.
I think it's an important distinction that Representative Duran was making, because to your point, it's actually, it's just a separate concern. We're not talking about people who are taking assistance. This should actually prevent people from the need to take public assistance, when they don't get fired from their jobs, for taking their mom to the dentist, or when their kid gets sick, or both, since there's a sandwich generation right now, that I'm sure a number of you in this room are pretty familiar with. You're having to take care of your folks and your kids, and sometimes your kids' kids. Well, you're, you're, right now, where we sit, too far too many Coloradans sit in a place where they have to choose between their jobs and taking care of their families. So actually, when you don't get fired, as a repercussion for leaving work, to either go to the dock yourself, or take someone that you need to take, you retain your job. You can come back after a couple of days off, instead of losing your job, and that's when you turn to government assistance, because then you're, then you're out of luck. So they're, they're just very different things. You're talking about someone who gets fired, receives public assistance, and chooses not to go back to work. We're talking about hard-working Coloradans who are desperate for a fix, so that they don't have to choose between keeping their job and taking care of their family, which is a choice I don't want to ask any of my constituents to make.
Okay, in the, in the text here, and then I'll quit begging the question, but it talks about serious health condition. What's a serious health condition? You just made it sound like if your child's got a cold for it, you can take the day off and still get paid, if you stay home from work. And you have to notify your employer, and how does that work? When does this kick in?
Gosh, whenever, whenever you have either a serious health condition, which it could be either a diagnosis of, you know, cancer diagnosis, or it could be a serious health...
Well, I'm sorry, but the senator just said it, if you have to take two days off to take care of something for your child, you can take two days off. I don't consider that a serious health condition necessarily.
Well, maybe not for you, but for a single mom, it could be. You know, you have 12 weeks to split up any way you want. If you need two days, because you're a single parent, and you can't rely on someone else, and you don't want to lose your job, and you're the only one that your child can count on, or your parent can count on, you should be able to, to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Goff?
Yeah, Kevin, could, could you clarify? I think somebody mentioned about potentially exemption, exemption for local governments or public sector, that, I mean, we provide as a city, short-term and long-term disability for our employees. Has that been considered, if an employer already provides coverage? Because we would, I mean, I think if we had to do this, we would probably maybe get rid of our short-term disability, or, which is probably a better benefit than this? I don't know. Just a good ques, just a question. I, I don't know.
No, it's a, it's a question that came up when the HR folks that, from a couple of counties, and one of our member municipalities, sat down with the sponsors and talked a little bit about existing benefits for employees, and, you know, how that would work, and it's not going to be solved by the bill. The bill is going to have this, and if you choose to keep something else, then that will be a local choice, there's no offset provisions. I want to say that, that when the bill is introduced, this is probably where we might diverge from our private sector colleagues a little bit, because I don't know that the private sector, maybe parts of it do, maybe parts of it don't, but I don't think that they necessarily follow the same type of benefit structure that we do at the public employer level, and possibly the state of Colorado included. I want to be honest with everyone, I don't think there's going to be, and I don't want to put words in the sponsor's mouth, either, I don't think there's going to be a lot of movement off some basic principles, just based on the intense and, intense interest and dedication that, I know that the Senate's prime sponsor, as well as Senator Williams, have had in this issue for multiple years now, and, and seen it fail. We're going to bring up that issue, and a few others that we think are specific to public employers, and, you know, the, the employer contribution, and how that comports with the unfunded mandate statute, and how we, how we deal with that. And we'll see where we end up. We'll start in the Senate, we'll have a conversation in the House, and, and it may look exactly the same, there, there may be some differences along the way, and that's what the process is all about. So, yeah, the answer to your question is yes, there is some, there are some issues related to existing benefits, and how they line up with, with this benefit would provide, and I will tell you that the public employers, at least at the municipal and county level, said, we got some better benefits than, than this would provide, and I think it's going to mean some, some difficult choices at the local level, if the bill passes as is, and giving up some of those better benefits. And I don't know what to do about that right now, except we'll continue to talk about it.
No, I think those are great questions. And until the bill comes out and it's introduced, I mean, there's always room, right, for conversation and compromise on some things, so that's what I would suggest, is we'll just go from there.
Thank you. I wanted to turn to Representative Duran, and welcome you back to Council Chambers, and thank you for coming back as a, as a legislator. I wanted to ask you about a bill that you had introduced, HB 191086, which we, is the Plumbing Inspectors Bill. And this, this makes a change to the qualifications that municipalities and, and people that do plumbing inspections for building compliance rely on, and I, I understand there's been some, some movement and change in the, in the bill, and I wanted to see if you could tell us where that's at.
There has been. I think when I walked in, Mr. Bummer was talking about my bill. I know it says opposed here. Can I ask if you've changed to neutral?
Adopt the amendment committee, and then, and then we'll get, and then we'll do it, because nothing's, nothing's happened yet.
Okay.
Okay, so that was misinformation I got.
No, the, that's, that status represents the bill in its form as it exists now, and, you know, even though it technically isn't amended until it passes on second reading with the committee report, if you adopt the amendment committee, then we withdraw our opposition. And I think...
Okay, great.
And I, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, one of, Brandy Delang is lobbying this, I think everyone is on the same page about what's going to happen in committee, and, and that there's some agreement. I hope that's correct, that's...
No, that's correct. I mean, we listened to CML and other stakeholders, we had a big meeting with about 20 of us. So we really listened to what the municipalities had to say, too. So we did make some amendments. I haven't gotten the final ones yet, I think I'm going to get them late tonight, and I will be presenting those in committee on Wednesday. So what I will do, once that happens, and it passes, I'm happy to forward it to you. It completely changes Section 1, the requirement of having, to have that 10-year span of licensed plumbing inspectors, you know, in increments. We, we listened to the concerns that you had, so there's a lot of changes. So once I get those finalized, I'll be happy to send them to you on Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay.
And are cities still going to be looking for their inspectors to be ICC-licensed? Are we looking for journeyman and master licenses only?
No, I mean, there's a whole, it's completely, it's completely changed. We're going to put a lot of it in the hands of the board, but it's also in the hands of the municipalities, and just kind of have, you know, options, different options. If, if you have the experience and the knowledge, and you've been doing it a while, you can test out, or test in. So like I said, there's a lot of changes, we've been listening to all stakeholders. Finally, put it all together, and I'll get it tonight, and then I can, I can send it to you, happy to send it to you, and, and take a look at it. I think it's a lot friendlier, and it'll be a lot easier on our municipalities moving forward. And then this summer, we plan to do more stakeholding within the municipalities and all our stakeholders, to kind of see how we can move forward with that licensing of plumbing inspectors, and see how we can address that differently than, than we were trying to do in this bill. Okay?
Thank you. I look forward to seeing those, those...
You're welcome.
Ms. Hoppie.
Yeah, I do have a question on that also. With the, the severe lack of availability in the trades, and, and in like the higher ends of the trades, with like the journeyman and the masters, I, I'm concerned that it would be a requirement for a municipality, because A, it would be taking somebody out of already our lacking workforce, where we, we need those already licensed tradesmen, but B, I know that the, the requirements that the inspectors have to go through, they have to be able to have the information to be, they have to be able to test on all of the information, the electrical, the plumbing, rough framing, sometimes the, you'll have somebody who specializes in foundations and things like that, and so I, I'm just wondering why we would even have to require above and beyond, like what was the reason why we decide, we, or what was the reason why you decided that this was a need? Like, what happened that made it a need?
Basically, it's really simple. It's just like when you go to a dentist, you want to see a licensed dentist. When you're having a plumbing job done, you want a licensed plumbing inspector to inspect that job, that's simple. There's been a lot of cases where a lot of things have been missed, not noticed, so it was important that we have somebody who's licensed to inspect, to be able to catch those things. But we also realize that there's been a lot of folks that have been doing this kind of across the board, either inspecting, whether it's electrical work, plumbing work, and realize that we don't want to put them in jeopardy of losing a job, like you mentioned with the municipalities here, whatever we're talking. So we're trying to be mindful and realize that, okay, look, how can we go around that? How can we still have licensed inspectors? That's a different conversation, like I said, we're going to have this summer. We completely took that out of the bill. So I will forward, once I get all those final amendments that we're working on tonight, and once we get it to committee, I'll forward those to you, because we wanted to be mindful, not to lose jobs, but also to make sure that licensed inspectors are looking at these things and these jobs all over. It's, it's just important to have, so...
Ms. Hoppie.
I guess just my, my question really is that you have to be a master to be able to pull the permit, to be able to do the, to do the work. So you already have to be a master, and so then, to have someone who's a journeyman, who's below a master, to have to go and inspect it, didn't, doesn't seem like a lot of, doesn't make a lot of sense, you know?
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying, and that's why we tried to take all these concerns, you know, when we were redoing this bill, to make sure we addressed everything. So, thank you for your question.
Thank you. I know that Judge Randall and, and Chief Brennan have some, have some question, or some legislation that they'd like to talk about. Would you like to come up, Judge, or Chief, and...
Yeah, if you have anything that I want to add to? Would you all, Judge, if you have some more to add?
Yeah, please.
Good evening, folks. I'm the, I'm Chris Randall, I'm the judge for the city, and I'm looking at, it's Senate Bill, thank you, Senate Bill 30, and it's about deferred judgments, and most people don't even know what they are. And what a deferred judgment is, they're only applied in criminal cases, they're, they're not used in a civil case, is you're charged with something, you come to court, and you work out a deferred judgment with the prosecutor. The judge has no power to issue one. And the way they work is that the prosecutor and the defendant work out a guilty plea, and that's all they do. The judge doesn't sentence the person. Now, the judge does give them conditions that they have to follow, usually for, for a period of a year, and if they follow those conditions, they're like a sentence, but we really don't call it a sentence, because you haven't, you've pled guilty, but you're deferring the sentence. So you have sentenced-like conditions for a period of a year. If you comply with those conditions, then the charge is dismissed at the end of that one-year period, and then the case is withdrawn, and it goes away, and you can have it sealed at that point. And once it's sealed, only law enforcement, judges, probably some other governmental agencies... agencies can access that file. But to the public, it doesn't exist, and the defendant can tell people, "No such charge ever occurred. The case doesn't exist. I never pled guilty." It's like it vanished. The issues with Senate Bill 30, and I can tell it's gone through a couple of revisions, it's actually, the verbiage has gotten better, it's become clearer, I think it's improved. But some of the concerns I have are, one, it permits a defendant, and the whole focus of this is what's happened with some people who are immigrants, is that they plead guilty, they go on a deferred judgment, they're successful on their deferred judgment, and then years later, they complete their deferred judgment, the charge is dismissed. Years later, due to just the guilty plea, the federal government, more particularly ICE, either doesn't, they leave the United States and they won't allow them to come back in, or they're deported. So, I think the sponsor of this legislation feels as though they're being tricked, that they're entering a plea thinking everything's great because the charge will be dismissed. My concern with this is that it goes back forever, and the problem with that is we're only required to keep records for four years. We won't know, if somebody comes in five, 10, 15 years later, we don't have access to that file, so we won't know what happened with that case. We don't have any information. The file has been shredded and destroyed. So, my concern is that this will, somebody can come in 20, 30 years later and request that the court take a look at that deferred judgment. We won't be able to do that, so I'd like to see a time restriction on this. So, from that court clerk administrative standpoint, going back forever is a problem. The other worry I have is that this addresses one collateral consequence, as it's called. When you plead guilty, there can be dozens, there can be hundreds of collateral consequences. The public defender, a couple of years ago, actually put together a handout on all the possible collateral consequences that there could be to a guilty plea in a criminal case. It's over 100 pages long, and so the court cannot advise every person of those, it's dozens, probably hundreds of collateral consequences. This is picking just that one collateral consequence. So, I have a concern that could be an equal protection argument. Somebody might come forward and say, "What about gun owners? What about this group of people? What about this particular profession?" So, this is very narrowly focused for immigration only, and that could lead to some problems. The other thing I don't quite understand with it is that if the court dismisses the case and closes the file, and then the defendant has it sealed, what more does this give? Is it like a double dismissal? I'm not quite sure the advantage from a procedural standpoint, what does the person gain? And I think the draftsman for this is hoping it'll block the federal government from doing anything. I don't think it will, because I don't think they care about the guilty plea. I think they care about the incident and what happened. And I've been told that ICE will use the police report more than they, more so than they might use the guilty plea. In other words, I'm not sure that this will remedy the problem it's seeking to resolve. Then finally, no judge likes to see the language that says that it is mandatory and the court shall grant the petition. The reason you hire judges is for their skill, experience, and discretion. To require that a judge automatically and always grant something may not be prudent because there's always that one case where the judge has, should have the discretion to not let that person withdraw that guilty plea. It's rare. I think I've only done, I've been here 16 years, and I think I've only done it one time, and it was very unusual circumstances. But again, a lot of times that mandatory language, you take that discretion away from a judge to do what's equitable and right for that particular case. So, I always have a hard time when it says the judge must do, you know, ABC. Any questions? I know this is very, it's very narrow and involves deferred judgments, it involves criminal law, which a lot of people are not familiar with, or at least the intricacies like this. Any concerns, questions? Do you agree? Do you disagree? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Have you sent your concerns to the sponsor of the bill? Have you communicated your concerns to anybody?
Yes, two ways. One, I actually wrote to Megan Dollar, so that's a colleague of his, Kevin's, in CML. And then we have, for a better name, a legislative group of judges that get together every month, and we have, two of the ways that we've responded to it, we've hired Dentons, the lobbyist, to advocate for us, so we've expressed to them our concern about this. And then we have a couple of the other judges that are on this legislative committee have spoken to representatives. I have not spoken to my representatives out of my voting district, but we've gone through Dentons, and then that legislative liaison committee has spoken to representatives, and I've spoken to CML.
Okay, thank you, because I hadn't heard anything about it, and I realize it's starting in the Senate.
It's sitting in Senate appropriations right now.
Is it? Okay, that's probably why.
It has greatly improved since the first version, but I wish I could rewrite it.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
You're welcome.
Get elected. So, Judge, would you like to join us up here?
So, good evening, Senator Danielson and Representative Duran. I just have a couple of bills I just want to bring to your attention if they're not on your radar yet and give you, you know, the chief's perspective on those. The first is House Bill 191177. That's the extreme risk protection orders. I know quite a bit of work has been done on that particular bill. The Chiefs Association is, and the sheriffs, some of the sheriffs in Colorado are very supportive of that bill, but that creates an extreme risk protection order. So, where this is really critical from a law enforcement and public safety perspective are in those incidents where we're dealing with somebody who might have mental health issues, there might be a domestic violence situation going on, domestic dispute, and there is a risk that the party involved has, is the owner of a gun or lots of guns and may use that gun to commit a more terrible crime than the one that they're involved in. So, a number of states have passed similar bills throughout the country, and this is one way we think and feel from a public safety perspective that we can address some of the issues around some of the active shooter situations we've had and some of the terrible tragedies we have from a homicide perspective, because it'll give law enforcement the ability to, in certain situations, to seize those guns. And then that then puts in place a due process aspect in which the party can get those guns back, but that would be a decision by a district court judge. But we don't think, you know, in our community that we'd use it a lot, but, you know, there have been situations where we've had some pretty egregious crimes where there have been guns involved and people worried about their own personal safety and the safety of their family and stuff. And this puts in place, I think, a pretty sound, solid way to give law enforcement the ability in certain situations to take guns and book them into our property section, and then creates that due process piece where a judge then can make the decision of when to release those. So, I know Sheriff Spurlock in Douglas County is very supportive of that bill and uses the example of Deputy Parrish's death in dealing with somebody with extreme mental health issues, who, whose parents had voiced concerns over the number of guns that he had had, and there just wasn't a mechanism for law enforcement at that time to seize those guns. So, that's one really good example of what might exist. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I was just going to give you an update in case you didn't have that. We, that bill, ERPO, passed seconds, and it passed thirds today. So, now it's going to go over to the Senate. So, we spent 10 hours in discussion Friday on this and spent another two hours, three hours today. So, it did pass second reading, third reading, now it goes up to the Senate.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
I knew it did get the second reading, but I hadn't heard that it had passed today, so thank you for sharing that. But if there's anything that I can do to help either of you in terms of explaining the bill or what it means to law enforcement in our communities, I'd be happy to do that. The second bill, and I'd like to talk about just real quickly, doesn't so much impact Wheat Ridge directly, but it's House Bill 1073, and that's the Public Safety Information Sharing Program. That's the bill that would create a grant. So, right now, Wheat Ridge and a lot of the Front Range and larger municipalities and counties along the I-70 corridor participate in the Colorado Information Sharing Consortium. So, this is a consortium that allows law enforcement agencies to share criminal justice information. So, a lot of our criminal justice information is sort of, you know, layered and locked into our individual communities. And the current CISC that we use allows agencies, for instance, if we have somebody that we're looking at for a crime, it allows us to pull data from other agencies that may have had contact with that individual or dealings with that individual that we wouldn't get through a CBI check, for instance. So, a lot of, a lot of the bigger agencies, Wheat Ridge included, and agencies even smaller than us, participate in this, but there are a lot of rural and mountain communities that don't have the resources to create the software interfaces between their records management systems and the CISC database. So, this particular grant program would provide a grant program for those smaller agencies to become partner members of that. So, the benefit is twofold. We, you know, as a community, would be able to get information, you know, from those smaller communities, but more importantly, they would be able to pull information that they could use, you know, in trying to solve crimes in their jurisdictions as well. So, just wanted to be aware of. House Bill 191119, this is the Internal Affairs records. In this, in this particular bill, what this does is, is it creates a mechanism that it's kind of twofold. One is it requires, as I understand it initially, when a citizen were to make a complaint against a police officer or police officers, it would require the organization to provide a summary document of the details of that investigation. We already do that as an agency. A lot of agencies that are nationally accredited and other agencies already provide that summary to citizens. This goes beyond that, though. If the citizen is not satisfied, gives them the ability to request the entire investigation. And so, that investigation, as I understand it now, there's been some work by the Chiefs' Association, will allow us to redact information. But I pose this question because even my colleagues on the Legislative Committee have not been able to specifically address it. There is no other profession that I'm aware of, attorneys, architects, elected officials, teachers, that allow a personnel investigation to just be released if a citizen requests it. Currently, the process that exists allows a person, if they want to request this and the agency denies it, to go to court, and there's an in-camera review of that information, and a judge, and, you know, with all their experience and understanding of the law, makes a decision of what needs to be redacted, what should be released and what shouldn't be released. And this sort of opens, you know, a door that allows any mistake or any allegation made against an officer to become a matter of public record and frankly could be shared by the news media. In states that have this, Florida being an example, they actually track officers who have had complaints, and if that officer's involved in a significant incident, the story is, well, this officer has had two or three sustained complaints. So, my challenge on this bill is, who as a human being in any particular job has not made an error in judgment or a misstep and been disciplined by the agency but suddenly has had that record become a matter of public record and available to anybody? I think if we're going to do this for law enforcement officers who are compelled, right, to tell, you know, the chief or an investigator what has happened, if we're going to do this for police officers, then frankly, we had to look at this from the broader perspective and look at it for all professions, because I think it will unjustly put law enforcement officers under even more of a microscope than they are today. We're having a pretty significant issue retaining officers and recruiting officers, and it's going to become more and more of an issue in smaller agencies and larger agencies because it's going to be a job where somebody's going to say, "I'm not sure I want to do this." So, the Chiefs' Association, at least the Legislative Committee, has been working with the sponsors on this bill and are leaning towards supporting it. I've been pretty vocal in my opposition to it. I know the sheriffs are opposed to it as well. And I'd really ask you as, you know, as representatives to say, you know, what I want, a mistake that I've made in my career to suddenly be a public record and be open to, you know, to the media, to the public, to be published. Certainly in those really severe cases, I think we have a right to report. I certainly think agencies have a responsibility to provide a summary of an investigation, why a decision was made. I just don't know if the entire investigation with witness statements and compelled statements needs to be a matter of public record. And in addition to that, it goes outside the scope of the Colorado Open Records Act as it exists today. And I don't know, Kevin, if you're up to speed on this or have anything, you don't have to respond to it, but...
Only enough to know that we withdrew our opposition.
So, I wish you had, but I'm going to express my opposition to it just to try to answer some questions.
So, Chief, you mentioned you spoke to the sponsors of this bill?
I have not spoke to the sponsors of the bill.
Did somebody?
I know the Chiefs' Association has spoke to the sponsors of the bill.
Okay.
And I did last year on the bill as well, Monica. I personally wrote to the sponsors, and I'll do that again on this bill as it moves forward. I just haven't done it yet.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that they're aware, and I'll speak to Rep. Coleman tomorrow, just to kind of share your concerns, because I wasn't aware of those, so thank you for sharing them.
And those are the only, the only ones that I want to spend time tonight talking to you about. I'll be in contact with you, as I have been in the past with Jesse, on bills as they move forward, so.
Great, that's always helpful.
Ms. Matthews?
I'd just like to go on the record, supporting the chief's state or position on this issue because I think our law enforcement officers are under a tremendous amount of scrutiny right now, and I don't, and I think the majority of the time, just unfairly so. It's almost become a cottage industry to go after policemen and prove some kind of malfeasance, so I just wanted to voice my support for the chief's position on this issue.
Thank you. Senator Danielson?
Thank you. I just had one quick thing, Chief Brennan. Appreciate your time and for bringing all these things to our attention. I know it's not tough to weigh in on the ERPO bill, and I really appreciate you coming forward in this way. Your words are not lost. And I'll talk to Senator Foote, too. I had one flag for you, because you, in particular, and the chiefs in general, have been supportive in the past of the elder abuse stuff that I'm doing. I introduced it on a Friday.
Yes.
And it does create two new crimes for which law enforcement can have new tools to try to protect citizens from this kind of abuse. We're talking about abandonment, so clearly defining what abandonment is, criminal abandonment, and unlawful confinement. So, sort of, as we do a great job in Jefferson County with the DA's and the local law enforcement, Jefferson County's on the leading edge of elder abuse work and prevention, so this is a continuation of that. And in the past, you have weighed in, so if you'd like any feedback, I'd welcome it. It came fairly quickly. But I worked with, again, the Jefferson County District Attorney's Office, the Elder Abuse Unit, and in... Unit, and in Denver as well, so several DA's, and then seniors advocates and advocates for the disabled. Love your voice. The idea is to give you the tools you need to go out and stop this kind of abuse from happening, and as it wasn't clearly defined in existing statute, I set to do that.
I'll look at the bill.
That's the intent.
We just got our legislative tracker today, and I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I'll look at it.
Brand-new. I just put it in on Friday. And so I welcome, again, if I need to meet with you on things you don't like, or if you just want to give it a resound.
Well, I'm sure if you worked with the DA's office, we work closely with our DA's office on elder abuse issues. I'm sure we're in close step with one another on that.
Thank you very much. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, some, well, I have something if nobody else does, but Mr. Duran, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I apologize to you, because I was late this evening, but I have a remote notary bill that hopefully you'll be hearing a lot about, because of technology in that, moving forward, we can do remote notary. But right now, there is nothing that states protecting the consumer data that's in that remote notary. So that's if you buy a home, sell a home, they kind of record the whole act. So this bill is stating that the only part of that process that's recorded is the Notorial Act itself, where they're verifying who you are, where you live, and the signatures that are needed. So it passed out of State Affairs, and then tonight it just passed out of Finance, so it will go to second reading on the floor. So just trying to make our community aware that this really affects all of us with our personal, private information. So if you have any questions, please contact me. Love to hear your thoughts and love to get your support on this, because we are there fighting for this bill. I'm not sure where CML is on this bill.
No, is that 1167?
Yes.
Okay. No, there's no position.
You just monitoring.
Are you, because I don't think too many, from what I've heard from the clerks through various contacts, and if something hits me in the back of the head, I'll know I said something wrong, but is it, it's not something that municipal clerks are necessarily concerned about, because they don't feel like they would be doing it. I know that there was a piece that went out to municipal clerks from some opposition, and I want to make sure you're aware of that, that piece that went around. It may result, and I suggested to one municipality that if it was a concern, that there was an easy fix to talk to the sponsor for a second reading amendment, but not because of some piece that came out of nowhere from someone who, from an organization that's opposed to the entire bill. I don't know, did anyone testify against it?
Yes, we had five hours of testimony in State Affairs. Tonight, it was, oh, maybe two hours. And the main thing is, Section 8 of the bill is about the consumer protection part, protecting your, all of your personal information, and the opposition would like us to remove that part of the bill, and that's not gonna happen.
That didn't have any...
It defeats the purpose of having this bill, so, like I said, it passed out of two committees now. It goes to the, it'll go to the floor after appropriation, so.
Thank you.
Yes, you're aware. Thank you.
Well, after the election in the fall, I would be, excuse me, remiss if I didn't ask about transportation. What's the solution to transportation? We have our, we have two, and no, we're gonna be done before nine, so. Any good news out there?
No.
Okay, well...
Let me tell you what's not the solution, and I can't remember if it's in this version or if it came in later. There's a bill that is parked in the House Transportation and Energy Committee that would make a revision to the specific ownership tax, the SOT. We've seen this before. This, the SOT is a tax, is tax revenue is returned to local governments in lieu of having a local property tax on vehicles. And the proposals from the, primarily from the trucking industry, is to have essentially a fee on a tax. How about that one? A fee on a tax, and then that amount would be returned to the state to fund transportation. Well, if there's ever gonna be an increase in this specific ownership tax, that is money that goes to municipalities, counties, school districts, and special districts, and if you ever want to see the four families unite, counties, municipalities, school districts, and special districts, this is one. I don't think that bill is long for the world, but it's not a solution. It's, you know, another Band-Aid approach, and unfortunately, I don't think we're gonna see anything comprehensive come out of the State House. I don't think it's anyone's particular fault. There's, the voters spoke, obviously, in the fall, and so now we're back, at least currently, to some more regional-type discussions, and you're probably aware of a few of those, so.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention, I had a meeting with Dr. Cog a week or so ago, and they're seriously looking at potentially some regional transportation taxes, RTAs. I'm not sure Metro Mayor's is part of that, too, but probably be a couple of years out for that, but...
And the other thing that was on my, oh, go ahead, Kevin.
But the Speaker of the House has articulated more than once, including at the CML Legislative Workshop, that transportation funding would be one of the components in a debreusing measure that she intends to spearhead, starting in the House. And of course, debreusing and retaining state revenues for transportation, education, and some other priority items, that would require the General Assembly to have a majority vote, and both the House and Senate to put it on the ballot, and then the voters get to decide, so.
Two-thirds majority?
Not for debreusing.
Oh, interesting. For any, anyway, okay.
Yeah, no, not for debreusing. That can be just a simple majority to refer it. Now, if we try to change Tabor or any constitutional provision, then that would require two-thirds.
And my last one, because I want to get out of here, is electronic sales and use tax.
Well, if there's ever a bedtime story, I was gonna say, if you want to talk about sales tax, bedtime stories, no, that is, there have been three bills that have been introduced thus far, two in the Senate, three in the Senate. Two of them did not leave the Senate. One of them had to do with an infringement on home rule. I'm glad it didn't go anywhere. The other was a good idea, but wasn't the whole story, so it didn't make it out of Senate Finance. That was what, dealing with the, for small businesses, the de minimis exemption on collection and remittance to, through the state sales tax, to statutory municipalities and entities based on destination sourcing. It doesn't impact home rule in any way, shape, or form. That concept will be incorporated into what I am told is the bill, it keeps being referred to as the bill, that I believe will be a representative Krafttharp, for sure, will start it in the House, and likely a Senator Tate, or Senator Court, Senator Tate, co-prime in the Senate. I don't know who Representative Kraft's co-prime would be, maybe Representative Van Winkle, but in any event, would take that issue and address it in a slightly expanded way, and then, again, that only deals with statutory, remittance to statutory entities, but it's something I think every local and state-elected official heard about when the state adopted its sales tax rules in December. They're now suspended until May 31st, is that if I make 20 sales to other places in the state, to have to file 20 tax returns through the state, that seems like a lot of effort for not a lot of revenue to the various destinations, so some de minimis makes sense. The other piece is the more aspirational piece, which is Senate Bill 6, that maybe within a couple of years, we'd see a single point of remittance. Department of Revenue and the Office of Information Technology would be working on that, an address locator, that for businesses would then have a single point to be able to remit their sales taxes. Home rule municipalities would have to look at that, couldn't be mandated onto it, but would have to volunteer to participate. If it's good enough, I think, and local authorities retain, I think it's a real possibility, but there's a lot of work that has to be done, and that's sort of that shining star on the horizon. So we're getting there. We will see, in the home rule municipalities, this discussion we had with finance directors and revenue managers, and as part of CML's Sales Tax Committee have said, you know, at this point in time, we know that if a home rule municipality tries to mandate that a remote seller without physical presence tries to, tries to tell that remote seller, you have to get a local sales tax license, they're going to say, you're frustrating interstate commerce, and you'll see a lawsuit à la Wayfair, only going the other direction, and that's a problem. I was able to get, Mayor, you'll appreciate this, I think I was able to get the attention of all of the folks that were there, saying, you don't want your mayor to be on the front page of the Denver Business Journal, explaining why your city got sued and got an injunction statewide on remote sales tax collections, because you tried to enforce that. What they're doing instead is, and I, we have a meeting coming up soon to get some sense of how this is working, is for now they're asking remote sellers to voluntarily remit sales taxes, and we are seeing progress on that, and that's the best we can do until we have a system that allows us to retain our local authority and still collect remote sales tax. So a lot more to tell that story than you want to hear right now.
Yeah, and we've, are able to get, I think it was 54, I'm not sure if you remember, Ali, I think 54 remote sellers to voluntarily license with the city. So, you know, a lot of them are fairly small, I think, but we're gonna continue working on the voluntary compliance to get as many as we can.
I think they want to do it, as long as it's clear how they can do it, and if we make it even easier with the Senate Bill 6 idea, some potential source of single remittance, it's gonna be even better, but we got a long ways to go.
Okay. Do we have any more business we'd like to conduct with our representatives here? I want to thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. I know it's been a long day on the Hill and in other meetings. You all do great service for us, and we appreciate you coming and talking with us and listening to our concerns and representing us and our citizens in the legislature. So with that, if there is no more business, and I'm not even at my agenda, but I hope we don't have...
Nope, no more business.
Okay, then we will adjourn this meeting and send you all home safely. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Senator.